We move into items seven and eight on your agenda. This is unique in that this is a development. So we're actually going to be considering the rezoning first and then the annexation. So ordinance 2997 is a rezoning of property located at 2810 Five Oaks Lane. This would be rezoned from Jefferson County to Vestavia Hills R2. All right, I'd ask for a motion to approve ordinance 2997. All right, motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. Pierce. I'm going to call on Mr. Weaver to talk with us about the rezoning and the conditions for this development.
Thank you, Mayor. This case came before Planning and Zoning Commission on our regular January 10th meeting. They requested action as a rezoning from Jefferson County E2 to Vestavia Hills R2 at 2810 Five Oaks Lane. The applicant is Round 2 Investments LLC. There was a general discussion during Planning and Zoning meeting. This is a request for an 18-lot subdivision. The city council began the 90-day annexation process by Resolution 5276 at our November 23rd council meeting. Compatible annexation would have resulted in an R1 rezoning. However, this proposed zoning is R2. All the lots meet the minimum requirements of R2. Because it is a non-compatible rezoning, it requires a pre-zoning. So as you said, we'll hear the zoning first, and if and only if the rezoning passes, then we'll hear the 90-day annexation. There were no concerns from staff. Upon most, there was a motion made recommending approval of the rezoning, and there were four conditions that were attendant to that motion. Number one is that the subdivision be built substantially as shown in the exhibit with 18 lots and Lot 18 remaining in the county. Number two was that Lot 18 be subject to the covenants and conditions of the entire subdivision, and if subdivided, cannot exceed a maximum of two lots compliant with zoning classification. Number three, that the development covenants and conditions include the following: to require the use of EPA-advised low-impact development and green infrastructure guidance in the SWPPP and landscape plans, including use of infiltration swells and green space in all drainage areas, require the planting of water-loving native trees in all infiltration swells, require dredging of silt and sediments from water-retention ponds anytime it reaches six inches, require that downspouts dump into previous surfaces, pervious surfaces, apply EPA, LID, and GI guidelines whenever reasonable to reduce the volume of water exiting the property. And four, that all of these conditions be included in the private restrictive covenants for the subdivision recorded in the office of probate judge and a copy filed with the city clerk prior to the effective date of rezoning. I'm sure there'll be some discussion tonight. There was quite a bit of discussion between adjacent landowners and the developer. There was, I'll call an agreement reached between the parties with regard to certain items that would be included and memorialized in the covenants. In addition to that, the, this is a conditional rezoning, and I would ask, Mr. Boone hasn't given an opinion with regard to conditional rezoning and how it applies in particular to this case and how we should proceed.
Thank you. I would first like to make some general comments about conditional zoning, and then I would like to make comments applying those general comments to the Five Oaks application. There are two ways to regulate the use in building and development of property. First, the development of property is regulated by the public. The public is the city. How do we do that? We do that by regulating the property through the zoning code, the International Building Code, the fire codes, the plumbing code, the electrical code, the subdivision regulations, the erosion and sedimentation ordinance, the pollutant discharge ordinance, the illicit discharge ordinance, landscaping, and I'm sure there are others. That's done by the public. The second way to regulate land is the owner of property can place and impose upon that property private restrictive covenants. It's done frequently. And the thing that we need to know about this is the city regulates through the public regulations, the property owners regulate through the covenants. The public regulations cannot, cannot, cannot lessen the requirements of the private regulations. Likewise, the private restrictive covenants cannot lessen the requirements of the public regulations. Let me give you the classic example. I live in Vestavia Hills, and my house, the subdivision was approved in 1947 by the city of Homewood. The side setback requirement under the private restrictive covenant is 30 feet. Under the city, it's 15. Now, George, I have to build 30 feet setbacks instead of 15. So now, let's talk about the public and the private control of the Five Oaks property. The developer came to the Planning Commission and said, folks, I want to build this subdivision with 18 lots, R2 zoning. And after a hearing, the Planning Commission said, well, the citizens have expressed some concerns regarding water, and we want to include in our recommendation the four conditions that Counselor Weaver spoke about. And the planning board recommended approval of the four conditions. The four conditions were brought forward in the form of the ordinance. Conditional zoning is live and well in Alabama. Cities like Vestavia Hills can enact ordinances that have conditions like this. Otherwise, we just turn you down. So at any rate, one of the conditions was that the private owner, the developer, would impose the same conditions in the private restrictive covenants that are stated in the ordinance. Not only did he do that, he attached a copy of the ordinance to the restrictive covenants. And that's a big advantage for everybody because whoever buys a lot at Five Oaks, that will show up in their deed that this property is subject to a covenant, and they can read the ordinance. It'll be put on record in the probate court of Jefferson County. So so far as the legal ability to impose conditions, yes, we can do it, and we've done it in the past many times. I'll answer any questions.
I'd simply put, this ordinance lists the restrictions that the Planning and Zoning Commission requested of the developer.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Bena?
And the restrictive covenants attached a copy of the ordinance. So both documents say the same thing. You can't tighten it down any better than that.
Questions or comments from council?
I have a question. Mr. Boone, I was looking at your letter. That was your advice to the council about conditional zoning and so forth. And I understood from the letter that the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission set were not identical to what was in the covenants. Is that no longer true?
That is no longer true.
Okay.
They tightened it up to the extent that they attached a copy of the ordinance, which contains our language. And the deviation was, it just wasn't verbatim. There were a word left out or stated a little bit differently. And I recommended that they either do it verbatim or attach a copy of the ordinance. I like a copy of the ordinance attached to it. Then the world's on notice.
Question. All right, other questions or comments from council?
Mr. Boone, if the HOA is responsible for maintaining these covenants, what if 20 years down the road, 15 years down the road, we start, the city finds out the HOA?
Heaven forbid that that happens because A, the city, through the zoning code with the conditions in it, can enforce them, and B, the private property owners in the subdivision or the neighborhood can also enforce them.
The individuals that buy these lots need to be fully aware of the existing HOA agreement and know they're liable for them.
They will be because when they buy their property, their deed will say, this conveyance is subject to the covenants that were approved by the developer.
I'd just like to add two things. As City Clerk Ms. Leavings will ensure that the covenants include what they're supposed to include prior to recordation, and this also comes to us with a unanimous recommendation for approval.
Any other comments or questions? All right, let's move to the public hearing on this property.
Mayor, I do have questions. I'm sorry. The subdivision of Lot 18, which was a requirement by the Planning and Zoning, correct Counselor Weaver? Is that correct? It was a condition, and that's in these covenants, that the subdivision will not be greater than two lots? Okay. And there was, let's see, just going through my list here. There was also a concern expressed by the residents about the Jefferson County Bridge that is in that area, and I would like to know if there's any more information that perhaps city staff can provide or any updates on the possibility of that bridge being rebuilt. I know that there was, and since we have our commissioner here, maybe he has some information about that.
Taking his jacket off, so I'm going to assume that he does.
Yes. It's like James Span taking his jacket off there.
I was going to have to work tonight. So the bridge that is on Caldwell Mill is load-rated with specific specifications. It does not, should not allow for 18-wheelers, should not allow for, normally for fire engines or vehicles of that gross vehicle weight over, I'm going to forget the number, so I'm not going to say. Our roads and transportation staff is aware, and I have updated them and let them know also that tonight was the night that potentially this would be going through and construction would start in preparation. Also had a meeting with Mr. Downs and our staff to make sure that they knew that dump trucks and other vehicles may be going over it. So this escalated it, and along with the five-year strategic plan, we're also working on a five-year capital plan that would help replace these bridges sooner. So it will be load-rated probably for, during the construction phase, and it will not be, so they will probably have to figure out another way to go around. But that's until we can get a final for our roads and transportation.
Do you do anticipate that this will be in the capital plan to include the replacement of this bridge?
And as we discussed it, and knowing that the, this subdivision was going in, that this would be one of those that would take a higher priority. And it will, it will anyway. If we go to market to get all these taken care of in a shorter period of time, then it will definitely be one of those higher on the list.
All right.
You could ask a question while you're up. This issue came up maybe two years ago. We were dealing with issues of the tractor-trailer trucks mailing going to the grocery stores, whatever, were cutting through there. There's some barriers have been created. I think that bridge is a three-ton limit or something like this is low. And part of the problem was that enforcing it is that a police officer can be out there unless he actually has the scales to weigh the truck. They might have weights on the side unless they actually have scales. I would ask that during this construction period, this is a county road that Jefferson County, help us in monitoring that road that construction vehicles don't decide to take a shortcut and dump trucks and come down through. They do, maybe you're replacing a bridge a lot sooner than later.
Sooner than later, yeah. A couple of things. The, it's like going up and down Highway 31. The municipalities between the county and the city goes like this. So it's in and out, in and out. We've had sheriffs, asked for the sheriff's department, of course, he's his own officer, as you know, and of course with, with city officers as well. We did, and I asked for the measures to be put in on Camp Horner and Caldwell Mill so that it would stop the 18-wheeler traffic, which has done a good bit. Camp Horner is going to, is on a plan now over the next two years to be totally repaved and expanded, and at that time, the county crews will take on and make that a permanent fixture with curbing and grass to help keep the 18-wheelers from coming down that way.
All right, other questions or comments from council?
I had a question about sidewalks. I read through the, the letter that was from the residents, and it mentioned that there was a sidewalk planned, and just wondered what the current status of that is. Is that, has that been agreed? So I understand that it's not part of this resolution, so it is not something that the builder, the developer, has agreed to, yet the, the residents had asked about the sidewalk. That was one of their requests. So have we found out anything about that from staff or?
I can speak to what I've been briefed on as far as the off-site sidewalks, not the sidewalks built as a part of the development.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry.
The off-site sidewalks, there was a conversation about a collaboration with the builder in the city, with the builder providing the materials and city crews or contractors coming in and expanding maybe 600 feet off the site, a sidewalk. There is not enough right-of-way currently to do that, so it would require the necessity of gaining that right-of-way. And the cost based on previous sidewalk projects that we've had, which is about $110 per linear feet, would ultimately, when you discount materials costs, would be somewhere between $30,000 and $35,000 to extend, extend the sidewalk. But it would require the acquisition of right-of-way and ultimately an approval of this council in a separate action to fund that particular project. So it is possible, but I understand that there's some pushback with some property owners that would require some of their property for that right-of-way to, to construct the sidewalk. It is possible, but it's, is going to take further approvals from this body to do that.
So I guess my only comment is that it's not at all certain. That would be fair to say, the off-site part, but the developer will be doing the sidewalk for his street, for his development. Thank you.
Jeff, I'd see where the, the developers also, number A, is requesting, will request lobby for and fund a stop sign at the intersection of Five Oaks Lane and Caldwell Mill Road. I would assume they'd go through the same process we have, process we have now, once somebody asks for a stop sign to be installed.
And that particular intersection, I believe, is controlled by the county, and so the county traffic engineer, Mr. Boozer, would review the warrant request and see if it meets the criteria for that, that particular installation.
All right, well, let's get back to, those are things that will come up down the road, but let's go back to the rezoning, and we'll talk about the rezoning. As Mr. Weaver said earlier, if this passes, we'll consider the annexation, but there won't be any annexation if we don't handle the rezoning. So let's open the public hearing at this point and allow anyone either in person or by Zoom to ask questions or make comments. Let's start with the folks in-house. Yes, if you would, come to the microphone, give us your name and address.
If you could, before we get started, can you remind everyone that once a point has been made or an item of concern has been noted that we don't need to keep repeating it over and over?
Yes, and for all of you listening and wanting to have your say, please, if we've covered a particular question, let's don't rehash the same question. So you're up first, you, you've got an open slate, so.
Thank you, Mayor Curry, Mayor Pro Tem Weaver, city council, and all the members who are here today and online. My name is Don Petry, and I live at 2809 Five Oaks Lane, which is across the street from the proposed development. I come here today as a representative of the neighborhood. Over the last seven to eight months, we have had three in-person meetings despite COVID. Each of those had attendance of around 60 people. We have an email distribution list of over 100 people where we've been in constant contact, keeping everyone updated and aware of the various developments and negotiations, and then a Facebook group of 60-plus people. This is a very large and active and diverse neighborhood. We have folks who have lived there for over 30 years and can tell us about the horses that used to run around in patchwork farms right around the corner, and we have new families building homes with young children and really enjoying the context, which is a very sprawling and open area. And so this, this has really brought the neighborhood together and, you know, in general, brought about a lot of comments related to some of the previous development in the area. So a lot of the concerns and issues that we have to share are related to some of the previous things that were approved. I'm happy to report that the developer, High Point Properties, and specifically Connor Farmer, has been very accommodating and helpful in listening to the neighborhood, has attended the meetings, has dramatically adjusted the plans after listening to the public comment. And so, you know, through the, the dramatic reduction in homes from 29, as originally proposed, down to 17, he's addressed a lot of the concerns around density. He's also addressed our concerns around green space as this property borders the Altadena Creek, which also borders the Altadena Park. And so he's created a 2.35-acre dedicated green space on this piece of property that will protect both the watershed and the view shed, and so that has significantly improved the outlook. You heard some of the control measures on the BMPs and the SWIP plan that will help control the water entering the creek. That's very important because there are homeowners experiencing property damage along that creek due to increased flooding levels caused by development in the area. But we see him working with the neighborhood and, and trying to ensure that he's not contributing to that existing problem. So in general, the neighborhood feedback has been positive around annexation. We understand that that will bring benefits to the community, it'll bring value to that property and help ensure optimal use. And as far as rezoning goes, that's supported because of the green space that's been dedicated and created by that. So in general, the, the feedback is, is positive and, and in agreement. You'll probably hear from a few folks in the neighborhood who have, you know, kind of their, their standard position, but, you know, there's a lot of voices on the screen who are going to be quiet because they agree with us. There are two concerns, which I did hear raised. Thank you so much, Ms. Cook, for, for bringing up both the sidewalk as well as the, the traffic calming measures. I understand, thank you, Mr. Downs, for some of the details around how that would actually be addressed. I do, I would be remiss in my role representing the neighborhood if I did not bring up those specific topics here and ask for as much commitment as you can give and guidance to address these topics. We know that they're sort of off-site issues, they're not specific to this, but we need to make sure that past whatever happens here tonight, that the community is able to get these issues resolved. And so the off-site sidewalk, the developer has been generous enough to donate those materials as well as the design, which was provided this week. That's a significant improvement to the city of Vestavia Hills, no cost to you. And so if, if there's some additional cost around the, the labor, we'd like to pursue that. Mr. Ammons here has graciously offered to take us through the Jefferson County Department of Transportation process to get a work crew hopefully assigned to help with that construction. So hopefully that will divide the labor cost, right, between the two jurisdictions. And so we're looking for some comment or statement on the record related to your commitment around that. And then the, the second one has to do with the speed, the, the traffic study, which was submitted by Skipper Consulting. And this would be the second draft because we asked them to, to fix a couple of measurement errors in the first one. In that, they observed on page three that the 85th percentile speed on Caldwell Mill Road was approximately 36 miles per hour. This is a 25 mile-per-hour zone, which means that at least 15% of the traffic on there is speeding by around 44% or greater. I can tell you, it's a very unsafe stretch of road. I've personally been struck by a vehicle on that road, and I know other neighbors who have. Thankfully, it's, it was nothing major, but all it takes is a couple of inches to, to turn that into a life-changing event. We have children in this neighborhood, there are no sidewalks, and the cars are going too fast. The people attempting to use that road are trying to get to a park. And so we would like assistance in implementing traffic calming measures. We've done our research, the stop sign would be quick and easy, but we understand engineers don't always like that. And so the, let's see, the community of transportation professionals and the Federal Highway Administration, they, they have recommendations on traffic calming measures. Their recommendation is for a speed cushion in this situation that has generally approval and support from emergency services as it allows large vehicles to pass through without slowing down. It does not impact response times, and it has the, the intended effect of, of reducing the speed of the vehicles. In fact, it was found to reduce on average the speed of vehicles by around nine miles per hour, which would get us back right, right where the speed limit is supposed to be. So we're, we're looking for support. We understand that these generally cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $3,000 to $4,000, and we're happy to listen to any approach necessary to get those funded. So I appreciate the time. I'd love a response on those two items on behalf of the neighborhood here.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else present that would like to ask questions or make any comments about this property or this development, I should say? All right, let's go to our online participants.
It's time for the remote attendees to comment if you'd like. We have a large number of attendees, so we need to do this very orderly. We have two pages of, two screens full of attendees. So if you're remote and you would like to split, speak, let's start out by asking you to unmute yourself and turn your video on so we can recognize who desires to speak tonight. I'm saying any, I do not see anyone. Hands raised, no unmuting or turning on video. So at this stage, no one is desirous of speaking remotely.
All right.
We do not appear, let me see if we have anybody. Yes, we have three attendees that do not have a video capability. If you are calling in and would like to speak, please hit star six to unmute yourself and, and speak up to be heard. I saw a chat comment that someone said that they have unmuted themselves. Is that, it looks like "Save my Altadena, please, Robert B."
I'd like to address the council. This is Robert Bowles, 4817 Bridgewater Road. And I have to reiterate what was previously said as being a resident concerning the traffic volume and the traffic speed. There have been officers that have monitored, and that only lasts a certain amount of time till people figure out the officers are not there. And I understand that will continue, but someone is gonna get killed on this road. I'm telling you, because many times I've almost been hit. So if you will please address this issue, because there will be more traffic on this road, coming and going. And I would certainly hate to see a child killed on this road because of negligence. That's my comment. I felt like I had to say it, and I thank you.
All right, well, we thank you for your input. You know, traffic calming is always, it's critical, it's something that we do throughout the city. And you are correct in that we can put a presence there and it'll help for a while, and then it comes back. So it's a never-ending problem for us, but we are addressing that. And I think I can assure you that our police department will listen to that and will address it as we can. All right, anyone else have questions or comments? And we're talking about the rezoning of 2810 Five Oaks Lane.
I think it might be helpful to just briefly say something about our sidewalk master plan and something that we discussed in our strategic planning, that we're gonna be revisiting that, just very briefly.
Why don't we go ahead and finish this particular property and then let's talk about that and as change to this property?
You don't want to talk about it now?
While we can, as Jeff said, that would be a separate matter that would come before us if we're gonna do it.
Just in general, just in general, I would say that the process is that we tend to stick to our master sidewalk plan, and we're in the process of forming a committee to redo that. And I would also like to note that we had passed an ordinance that allows residents to offer monetary assistance if they want to come together. There's a specific way to do that. So anyone who's interested in forming a partnership with the city to help pay for sidewalks that they particularly want in their area, that is taken into consideration when the council makes decisions about which sidewalks get funded. So I just wanted to mention that. And the traffic calming as well. We, I know that the city uses the Action Center reports about concerns, and we use that to monitor intersections that become concerning. And we had talked about that in our strategic planning as well, that we had asked the city to take a look at complaints that we'd had in certain areas to determine if we have particular places in our city that are concerning so that we know what we need to address first. So I just, that's my only comment.
You are correct. We will be addressing both of those issues. But for now, I don't see any other public comment, so I would say let's close the public hearing and call for the question on the rezoning. This is ordinance 2997.
Ms. Cook? Yes. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Curry?
Yes. And then the next item, of course, would be the annexation of this property. That's ordinance 2998. This is the 90-day final. I'd ask for a motion to approve 2998. All right, motion by Mr. Weaver, seconded by Mr. Pierce. Do we have any comments or questions from council? All right, with that, we'll call for the question on ordinance 2998.
Ms. Cook? Yes. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Curry?
Yes. We will close the public hearing. We'll call for the question on Resolution 5300.
Ms. Cook? Yes. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Curry?
Yes. All right, that's Resolution 5301.
Mayor, we gotta get a vote first.
Oh, we gotta vote on it, that's true.
Ms. Cook? Yes. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Curry?
Yes. First one, Resolution 5301 would authorize the city manager to split surplus funds, that's got a nice sound to it, doesn't it, surplus funds, between the general fund budget and the capital projects fund budget. Is motion to approve?
Moved.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Cook, seconded by Mr. Weaver. Jeff, anything you'd like to add?
On both of these matters, we discussed them at length in our strategic planning. We are blessed in the fact that we'll have a record surplus from this past fiscal year, nearly $2.7 million. And it's been the practice the last couple of years, we've split that so we have some money in our capital fund, some in our emergency reserve fund as well.
Well, I'm glad we have this resolution for sure. All right, any questions or comments from council? All right, on this item, it includes a public hearing portion. Anybody have any question about what we are doing with our surplus fund? Any of the virtual attendees?
To speak on this matter, please unmute yourself and turn your video on, please.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. We'll call for the question on 5301. Oh, do you have a question or a comment?
Thank you, Don Petry, 2809 Five Oaks Lane again. Just a question, since we're still kind of waiting to understand how the city plans to address the two items we raised tonight. We would like to suggest that some of the surplus funds go to address the sidewalk and the traffic calming measures. Thank you.
Will be considered for sure. All right, any other public comment? Let's close the public hearing, call for the question on Resolution 5301.
Ms. Cook? Yes. Mr. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Weaver?